It's gonna be a little bit naked because I don't have the right connectors to the projector down here, so we had to run it up there. So I'm gonna try to be communicating with the young man up there to advance the slide. So hopefully this will not get too chaotic. But thank you all for coming. My name's Brian Green. I'm the state representative for District 57. I see a lot of familiar faces out in the crowd and some new ones. And this is a great turnout, and I'm very appreciative that we have such a good turnout. I wanted to meet with the citizens of the district before the legislative session gets started on the 26th, the week from next Monday, because I've been getting a lot of emails. I've communicated with many of you that are here on some important issues. And so I wanted to go over those issues and then open it up for questions about issues I made or topics I may not have covered. But in all of the emails that I've received, there are four predominant themes or issues. That light's gonna continue to do that or not? And those four are gasoline tax, transportation fund. The second one is the relocation of the prison, which doesn't necessarily affect our district, other than financially, as part of the state, as taxpayers. And most of the emails and other messages that I've been getting have been from citizens outside the district. But I wanted to touch on that anyhow, but we'll do that one quickly. The third thing, which does affect our district, and I have received a lot of communication from our district residents, is the proposed wood burning ban. And I guess I am a little surprised with the amount of backlash from that. Out of curiosity, did anybody go to the first public meeting on that with the Division of Air Quality last night? It was in Tuilla, so you probably didn't go. But they're having six of those around the state. The first one was last night. And I hear it was about as one-sided as the county commission meeting Tuesday here in Utah County. You guys are doing great things, and I'm happy to have so many of you active in the political issues that affect not only our cities, our neighborhoods in our district, but our state as a whole. And then the fourth thing was just general tax increases. The media has been overplaying the desire or the appetite of your legislature to raise taxes. And I've seen the reports, and I've heard from many of you, and many of these news reports just kind of report this as a foregone conclusion, that the legislature is going to raise your taxes, whether it's your sales tax, or your gas tax, or other taxes to fund various different things. And so we'll talk a lot about the budget. And so let's start off with that topic. Go ahead and advance the slide. Yeah, we're not gonna be able to see that. But basically, what this is here is a list of factors in our federal or in our national economy, and even some international issues that have an impact on our national economy and therefore our state economy. Uh-oh, there we go. Okay. So we had some recovery in the United States, but it hasn't accelerated. It's been very slow throughout this recovery. Our GDP has been low. Our job growth, I heard since this slide was put together, I just heard a report that come from, it was just this week, that although we are adding jobs, our average income or average salary per job is still going down. And so that's not, that's not all good news. But all of these factors here, including the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, as we implement that further, and the geopolitical threats, all have an impact on the US economy and therefore Utah's economy. So these are issues that we have to deal with, try to anticipate and forecast as we go through the budget-making process. We're not all a bunch of bumbling idiots in the legislature. In fact, I wouldn't say any of us are. We get that reputation sometimes. But we are very conscientious in this process, even though we have a very condensed period of time with which to complete it. So go ahead and advance to the next slide if you would. Oh, you can't read that. But this is a little cartoon that kind of describes what we don't do with respect to the budget. It would be convenient to be able to push all of these issues down the road and not consider them as we try to put together a budget. This is the founders around the Declaration of Independence, and it says, "I realize that you guys," that's the guy here on the left speaking, "I realize that you guys are all caught up in the moment, but some of us think it would be safer to kick the can down the road." And thank goodness they didn't do that. And we try to, as your legislature, have that same stewardship and that same responsibility to address these critical issues that are before us and not kick them down the road. And that oftentimes creates some conflict and some contention between the legislature and the executive branch, the governor. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. A lot of that is healthy. But I say that because the governor is a full-time governor, and he's got the bully pulpit, and he's got the news media in front of him whenever he wants it. And so about November of every year, he starts talking about the things he wants to see and the direction he wants the state to go, and releases those pieces of information as if their policy, and that's what we're going to do. And you may have, I mean, that's where the wood burning ban proposal came from. Now, we do have air quality issues. I don't dispute that. I don't, and we do take steps every year as a legislature to try to handle that. But the type of absolute blanket ban that has been proposed doesn't seem to have a whole lot of support. And there's a whole lot of people that are impacted by it. So the next thing he talked about, the governor talked about as he released his proposed budget in December, was a $600 million surplus that was gonna go to education. And that would be nice. We would love to be able to better fund education. But we have demographic challenges in this state that are unique and that are so far removed from what any other state has to face. The national average of student or public school age population to working adult age population is 25 public age or public education age students for every 100 working age adults. And that gives you some indication of your base, your revenue base, to fund public education. In Utah, we are 50% higher than that. We have 37 school age children to every 100 working age adults. So we are always going to struggle. I mean, that's not just a slight difference from the national average. That's a dramatic difference. And that's a challenge that we put on ourselves knowingly, for good reason, that has a lot to do with our culture here. But understanding that, we then have to deal with what those challenges mean in funding education. And so if we, it would be nice to give 600 million of new money to education, but it just can't be done. And I'll show you why. So go ahead and advance. Again, one thing we need to understand is the, these two terms, one-time versus ongoing revenue. Go ahead and advance. One-time comes from prior year surpluses, which we have some of this year, changes to the current year estimate. As we go through the current year estimate, that can either go up or down from the beginning of the year estimate. So that would be one-time money. And then other sources like lawsuits and things like that. One-time money by policy that the legislature, I think, has prudently adopted can only be spent for one-time expenditures. We can't use one-time money for ongoing expenditures, expenditures we will have every year, which would be funding of education. Much of this money, this surplus that we have, 600 million, is one-time money. And the last thing we want to do is say to teachers, "We're gonna give you a 5% raise, and then next year not be able to fund it because the one-time money is gone." So we have to do those types of things with ongoing revenue. So click again, and that is just regular continuous revenue sources. And so there's a lot that goes into this budgetary process. Again, advance. So let's talk about where it comes from. Advance. This was our current year budget of 13.5 billion. The budget we will be preparing when we convene in two weeks will be about 14 billion, because we have about 600 million of new money. And I'm assuming we're gonna spend it all. And so these are the areas where it comes from. Education fund, that is, that's income tax. Income tax is constitutionally dedicated to education. And we have general fund money comes from different sources, federal money and some other things. But the two big ones that we're gonna deal with are federal, excuse me, general fund and education fund. Go ahead and go forward. Advance. Oh, okay. So those two combined are about 5.8 billion. Notice, federal funds are 27%, which is actually down a little bit from where we peaked out with our reliance on federal funds. I see that as a positive trend, and hopefully we can keep going in that direction. Advance. Go ahead, keep going. Listen, okay. So go ahead and advance till that fills up. One more time. Okay. So we have dedicated revenue buckets. Our income tax, corporate income tax, the sheet, you don't need to worry about that. But that's essentially when people die without their estate going, it has no place to go, then it comes to the state. That's a small amount. That goes into our education budget. Our general sales tax, sin taxes, alcohol and tobacco net and severance, the money that the state gets when, from the mineral leases that it grants for oil and gas and coal and other things, that as those natural resources come out of the ground, the state gets a significant portion of that. And so that all goes into the general fund. The transportation fund is your motor fuel tax, your special fuel tax, which is like aviation tax, aviation fuel and some other things, and your vehicle registration fee, those go in, that goes into the transportation fund. Now, the surplus we're talking about, 600 million roughly of new money, is spread across those categories. So it can't all go into education. That's the first point I want to make. Go ahead and advance to the next slide. Go ahead. We don't need to waste time on that. But keep going till the new slide comes up. So where it goes. So out of that 13.5 billion, 30% goes to public education. Now, you've heard, I'm sure, the comment, which is true, it's not a comment, it's a fact, that Utah's per pupil funding for public education is dead last of all 50 states. And that's true. But that's just one metric. If you look at the percent of our state budget, we're in the top 25% on education funding. And again, that's due to the challenges we have with a much higher ratio of school age children to adults. So I always like to make sure that people understand that. When they complain about us being 50th out of 50 states in per pupil funding, we're in the top 25% of states and 2% of our whole budget that is spent on public education, 12% to higher education. Here's the big one, though, that is really a problem for us and is going to continue to grow, is social services. Currently, we're at 34%. It's the single biggest expenditure we have. And the biggest expenditure in that is Medicaid. And so with the governor's Healthy Utah proposal, which is Medicaid expansion under Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act, and we'll get to that in a minute, we're going to see that number go up significantly. Not initially, there will be a small increase initially, but when the federal government decides it no longer wants to fund 100% of the expansion, we're faced with the proposition of discontinuing the program to the detriment of our citizens who have become reliant on it or paying for it ourselves. Go ahead and advance. Okay. So, and this is just the general education, the general fund and the education fund, which was the two components I said that we were gonna focus most on. And that's just a breakdown. Of those two, 48% goes to public education. You can see social services is a little, it's half of what it was under the general, the whole budget, because a lot of those funds are federal funds. They don't come from our general fund or our education fund. All right, go ahead and advance. So let's talk about where we are currently. Advance. And this is the 5.6. And believe it or not, when we convene in two weeks, we will be talking about creating the fiscal year 2016 budget. We're in the 2015 right now. We're halfway through. And our fiscal year goes from July 1st through June 30. And so we start the 2016 fiscal year budget halfway through 2015. So that's the one we will be working on. And you can see, just in the general and education fund, we're up about 200 million there. Okay, go ahead and go forward. So here's where we get into the, get into the weeds with the governor. And why, as much as we would love to be perceived as the most education-friendly legislature in the country, we're often not, because we have to make the hard choices. We've got ongoing money. We've got 77 in the general fund, 248 in the education fund. One-time is 93 out of the general fund, 220, 220 million in the education fund, for a total of 638. Advance. Yeah, go ahead, advance. Yeah. But here's the problem. This 638 million dollars of surplus is a double-edged sword. It's great, because we have more money that we can fund necessary services with, or we could put money in a rainy day fund, build that back up. I'll show you a slide on that in a minute. Or we could talk about a tax break. But with all of the talk this year about tax increases, I don't think anyone, I don't think there's, I don't think there's an appetite for a tax increase, but I also don't think we're gonna see a tax decrease. So let me just leave it at that. But this, this is the way we look at these revenue sources. You plot them out over the year, and this is just an example. It's a corporate tax collection. But you do this with every source of revenue. And you can see as you go across the years on the bottom, that line of actual revenue kind of jumps all over the place. That dotted line that has the gradual increase is the trend line. What, that hashed area above the trend line, we call bubble revenue. We refer to that as bubble revenue, because it's above the trend line. We don't want to become reliant on it, because the trend says that that's a short period, we're going to have that level of revenue. And it's, it'll fluctuate, but we can't rely on it for ongoing money. We, so we rely on what is within the trend line. So go ahead and click the next slide. This is the, is that as blurry to the rest of you as it is to me? My eyes just must be bad. So here we have the general fund and the education fund revenue sources. And the blue line is the trend. And that, you can't really distinguish the colors here, but that, you can see that the more squiggly line, the gray line, is the actual. So we have periods where the actual is significantly above the trend line. And that's where we are right now with some of this revenue. So go ahead and click the next one. So what we do is we take, you can see the second line up there, bubble revenue. In the general fund, 58 million of the 77 is above the trend line. So instead of relying on that and then not having it next year or the year after, we bring that ongoing revenue down to the trend line and shift the bubble revenue over to one-time, treat it as one-time, and just use it for that next budget, so we don't become reliant on it. And then if you go down to education, you can see the same thing. 58 million was above the trend line, so we moved that to one-time money. So now, all of a sudden, we have 189, excuse me, we have 179 million of ongoing money, 429 of one-time money. Click forward. Now, that's significant. Go again. Because of the 179 available ongoing for education, just to fund growth of new students at our current rate, that takes 52 of the million, or 52 million of that money. To give a 1% increase in the WPU, the weighted pupil unit, that's our basic formula for funding education. I won't get into that, because it's so confusing. I don't fully understand it. But just a 1% increase, which would reflect in a 1% increase across the board in wages, so raises to student, to teachers, that's 26 million. Medical, Medicaid inflation and capital improvements, there's some other things here. All of a sudden now, we're down, and we've spent it all. Health insurance is a big one. We're seeing that type of increase every year, just to fund our teachers' health insurance and administrators as well, every, all employees within public education. And another one that isn't even on there is retirement. That goes up dramatically every year. And so 179 million is gone. Go ahead and click forward. So the available one-time money, we had 429. We've got buildings for capital improvements. We have a building board that, a board meeting, a committee, that determines the most important capital improvement projects that the state has, and prioritizes them. And that list is at 510 million, just the priority stuff. So if we used it all for that, we wouldn't even have enough. And then here's some other things that we have long-term capital improvement needs. And the prison, you can see, is on there. Now, let's talk about the prison right now, because I said I didn't want to spend a lot of time on it. But it's important to understand. A lot of the emails I get talk about, "It's a waste of taxpayers' money to move the prison." And I can assure you, I have studied these numbers carefully. It's not, that's not the argument. That argument is flawed. It's not a waste of money to do that. There may be other good reasons for not moving it, but inefficient use of taxpayer money is not a valid reason, because regardless of whether we move it or not, we have 500 to 800 million in maintenance, a lot of it deferred maintenance, that we haven't been doing. And it's, it's reaching a critical mass right now. It's, it's reaching a crisis. Part of that, not the whole 800 million. And so that, the only way we have to fund that, to revitalize the current prison, if it stays in Draper, is taxpayer revenue. So we're going to spend 500 to 800 million over the next 10 years on the Draper prison. It is estimated, I don't even want to say estimated, because that's too weak of a word. Studies, very thorough and careful studies, have shown that for about a billion dollars, we can move the prison, rebuild it, but we will recover the vast majority of that million, a billion dollars from the sale of the land that the prison is on now. So, you know, we'll still be into it a little bit. It won't cover the entire move, but it won't, the difference is going to be much less than the 500 to 800 million. You don't agree with me?
No.
Okay. Well, let's talk about it. That's why we're here. Why not?
People have been saying that the, the cost of the prison, to build it right now, they say in a short time, and maybe, maybe that's true, but they're talking about 10, 15 years. It'll be shorter term to tear, build a new prison, relay, demolish it, use the land around there. And maybe in 20 or 30 years, maybe the cost difference would be in the tax base. But look, I mean, the, where it's located right now, it's got all the essential elements, right next to the freeway, it's close to hospitals, all the infrastructure is already there.
You're right.
And you move it out into who knows where, those costs are gonna go up, and it's gonna be a whole lot more than what they're, what they're trying to tell us right now.
Well, I, I don't want to turn this into an argument, but I've seen the studies and the projected cost for extending certain services. Now, you go way out in a salt flat, certainly. But if you go out past Tuilla, or out near Tuilla, Grantsville, for instance, to extend a tracks line there isn't going to, I mean, that's one of the proposals that they've looked at. But this is the point that I was getting at. Those are all good arguments for keeping it where it is. The services are there. We have easy access. All of that's still there. That's a valid argument that I can accept. I don't have any skin in this game, and I did, I'm assuming many of you don't either, because we don't, it's not gonna be in our backyard, no matter where it goes. And so I'm just trying to make the point that the cost and the waste of taxpayer dollars is not a valid argument. Some of the things you brought up certainly are. But those are other arguments. And they may be justification enough for leaving it where it is. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not sold either way. So I'd like to know what, what all of you think.
Also, I mean, not only the sale of the land, but the ongoing sales tax revenue and business that comes in there, plus the
Right.
Desire of people to locate in that area would go way up, instead of being located next to the prison. And so business-wise, it would seem like it would make more sense, especially since Lehigh and that whole area is saying it is all growing. Silicon Valley-wise, it would be great to move that out there, get the sale of, get the revenue of the land, plus the sales tax, plus the corporate businesses that would move into the area.
Sure.
And that would seem like that would be a good thing. Plus, if we're gonna save 580 million dollars just to keep it running the way it is, you know, why not move it into a better place and get a better facility that's gonna last us another 100 years or whatever, the 75 years, instead of trying to keep this going, and then 10 years down the road, we're gonna have to do more people.
And I'm glad you made that point. This does need to be a 75 to 100-year decision. And so all those factors need to be taken into consideration. Like I said, I wanted to keep this discussion short, just because it's not in our district. I just wanted to make the point that your contribution as taxpayers isn't necessarily negatively impacted by moving it or keeping it there. I mean, you, you could make the argument that you're gonna end up paying more to keep it there. But the argument I've been carrying most commonly is that, let's spend the money somewhere else. We have greater needs than a new prison. Well, we have to spend the money regardless. So there was one more question. Ed, go ahead.
If I got to say the 500, I mean, part of that is because of deferred
Yes, the prison is quite old.
Sure. How old? Well, it's at least 30 years old, because when I served my mission there.
Different parts of it. There's, there are parts of it that are 50 years old or more. And then we've, we've continued to expand it, but
So if that is the case, if they've got the deferred things, that means that they have been able to, in some way, keep up with what's going on. Is that a legislative decision?
That's a legislative decision, because, because this prison relocation discussion has been ongoing for six to eight years. And so And so...
Why build a new building?
There's been reluctance to put money into it if it was looking like we were going to move it. It was only this year, in fact, in fact, the past six months really, where this groundswell of public opposition has erupted. Similar to BRT down in Provo, Orem. That's been ongoing in the works for a long time, but it's only been in the last several months that we've seen this groundswell of opposition. And it's a good thing, I'm not criticizing that at all. It's important for US citizens to, to speak up. And there's no such thing as too late to the game, but it is better to get in and express your voice early.
So here's my only question there. Just, I want to make sure that before I ask the question is, if they move the prison, are they working under a model that is somehow deficient, meaning financially to the prison? Is that what you look at as part of that?
Yeah, one of the other things I wanted to touch briefly on was, we are experiencing, we are one of the only states that is experiencing a continued increase in our population, our prison population. We had a prison population explosion nationwide from about nineteen ninety, mid to late eighties, at about, for about a twenty-year period. And many states began to look at those problems, because they were overcrowded in their, in their prisons, and they were spending a whole lot of money. You know, we spend about thirty-six thousand dollars a year per, at the state level, per inmate, as opposed to about sixty-five hundred, seven thousand a year per public education student. So, that's one area right there we need to take a better look at, and, and find efficiency. So at the same time, we're talking about this prison relocation, the state has engaged in a very comprehensive study of a criminal justice system reform. And you'll see some bills come through the legislature that will address those things. Because the, the bulk of our population increase is from recidivism. Not people, once they get out committing a new crime, but violating a condition of their release, whether it's payment of a fine, probation parole conditions, that aren't in and of themselves criminal, but because of the situation they're in, it lands them back in, inside. And, and so we have done this study, and it has, we, we have a full report now, that's out, and you can find that online, it's the, it was put out by the, oh, I'm trying to, the, the acronym for the agency is CCJJ, I'm trying to remember, it's the Criminal Something in Juvenile Justice Division of the executive branch. And we've got this very comprehensive study now, that has a bunch of proposals, that if we adopt these proposals, the projections are that instead of our population continuing to increase, oh, and that's the other thing I forgot to mention, if we don't make changes, our current prison population will go up fifty percent over the next ten years. If we do make these changes, it'll essentially level off plateau and stay the same. And so, the need for continued increased capacity within our prisons is, will be moderated. Now, we do have a newer prison down in Gunnison, and there's a whole lot of new ideas, philosophies, and structures that have come into place with, you know, how to make an efficient prison setting. We've done a lot of that in Gunnison, and we would certainly do that with the new prison, which would have a lot of built-in efficiencies, that we won't get if we just continue to dump money into the one we have. I shouldn't have said dump money, because that makes it sound like I'm passing judgment on, I don't mean that. But this is really an issue that I don't know where I'm at on yet. I, I've seen both sides, and I've seen the outpouring of, of concern from citizens, which to me is, is one of the most significant factors. So, we'll see where this goes. But it's, it's beginning to look like, we're not going to be moving the prison, because we don't have any place to put it now. Every place that has been identified, for the most part, they, the cities have taken it off the table because of the reaction from citizens. So, we'll see where it goes, it's not a done deal yet, the decision, final decision hasn't been made, but, but let's move on from the prison, okay?
I just want one last thought on, on the study. I haven't looked at it in real detail, but the, what, what they seem to be proposing is, they seem to be saying, let's, because a lot of these problem, a lot of these inmates are drug-related crimes, they're not really dealing, they're just users, let's take money and, and instead of putting these people in jail, let's put them into treatment.
That, that's one of the proposals.
I have, just me personally, I have a real concern with that, because once again, we're going down this path of, let's just grow government, instead of penalizing a problem, we're now going to pay for rehab and, and I'm...
But we're not growing government, the proposal isn't for new money.
No, it's not new money.
It's just for using the, the current...
Well, that was quite a concern though, because aren't we, once again, creating a dependency on government that will grow? That was my concern. They don't seem to think that's the case, but we, my, my limited experience is, once you're giving free things out to people, you, you're, you know...
Well, we wouldn't be giving out free things, maybe people that had committed crimes, committed violations, but are then diagnosed as mentally deficient. We have a large percentage of our population, our prison population, that is, that suffers from mental illness, and we treat them through the criminal justice system, which is inefficient and ineffective, because with those mental deficiencies, the traditional deterrent, punishment and reformation ideas of the criminal justice system just don't work on people, on many people that are mentally deficient. So we're spending the money on them anyhow, but we're not getting any benefit for it.
I would agree with that, but my, my comment was limited to drug users. Instead of criminal, criminalizing it will make it a, a treatment problem, and the government will start spending on treating drug abuse.
Well, we're not talking about decriminalizing drug, drug use, drug possession, drug transactions. We are talking about taking some of those that are felonies now to a class A misdemeanor. And there's a whole lot of reasons for that, that we just don't have time to get into, but, but the savings to the state are noticeable, are very measurable, and...
If you, if you assume that that population's not going to grow?
Yes, yeah, and drugs are terrible things, and they're very addictive, and they continue...
If I want to get on the dole, an easy way is just to start doing drugs now. I don't think I'd be looking at that, and maybe that's it.
And I really don't think there are many people that consciously make that decision, you know, I'm going to become a drug addict, so the government will take care of me. There may be some, but I just, to me, that, that's almost, that almost defies logic, that that people would make that conscious decision. That may be the net result, that they become stewards of the state because of choices they've made, but, yeah. So, so watch those, if you're interested in that, you can find that report online, on the state's website, and, and offline, you know, you, I welcome any questions on that. So, this is a snapshot of our general rainy day fund. You can see how up through two thousand, what is that, eight or nine? Two thousand eight, it, it hit its peak. And of course, that coincides with the beginning of the recession, and then we dipped into that a lot, so that we didn't have to cut things way back in the state. There was a lot of cut, there were a lot of cuts in the state during the recession, but not as many as other states had to turn to, because we dipped into that general rainy day fund, and our education rainy day fund as well, which has a similar graphic. But we haven't been building that back up. That, that red line is where we should be, that's the trend we should be on. And we just haven't, as, as our revenue has been increasing, we haven't been putting money back in there. And with this six hundred and thirty-eight billion, a million dollar surplus, we're not talking about putting any of that in there.
You know, I, I want to point out that in a thirteen billion dollar budget, the rainy day fund that we're talking about is what, two hundred million at the peak? I mean, we're talking a few percent.
Right.
Just so people understand that, that, you know, it's not like we got a half a year in there, we got a couple of months.
Right. And, and that's why we had to resort to some serious cuts as well, but this helped take the edge off.
Yeah, I would have done the same thing, you know.
And, so we, I think it's important to get it back to where it should be, not only where it should be, but even beyond that. Now, there are a lot of ways we could do that, one of those involves, you know, having control over the sixty-six percent of our land that we don't have control over, and that is always going to be a priority of your legislature. So go ahead and advance that, I want to try to get moving through this one. Oh, so we're at the end of that one? I have another one. So go ahead and, and down to the bottom left. You with me? Okay.
Well, while I was doing that, but, uh, back to the, the funding of the school system, it seems like we really should be phrasing the issue in, around getting the federal government, and I know this is an old argument and everything, but I would like to hear our legislators talk about, you know, the real problem here is that we can't get the federal, we haven't been able yet to get the federal government to abide his contract and give us back our lands, so that we can get the revenue from, from those.
You haven't heard me say that?
Not today. I meant it today.
But, that's something I usually say every time I, I have a meeting, you know, so much so that I, I kind of maybe develop somewhat of a complex, so I maybe don't hit it as hard as I used to, but, because I know everyone's not on board with that. But, and so I didn't even bring, I didn't even put that in my slides, but you have to look at the ownership of land, the control of land, from the Rocky Mountains East versus the Rocky Mountains West, and, and you just can't look at that and not intuitively know that there's a big, great injustice there. That we are expected to do the same things that every other state does with respect to services for our, our citizens, and the biggest resource that enables us to do that is controlled, sixty-six percent of it's controlled by the federal government, and we do not generate revenue from that. So, that to me is, you know, I, I've made this comment before, I mean, to me, that is a equality issue, that's a civil rights issue, that we are treated differently as citizens of Utah than citizens of Kentucky are treated, or citizens of Minnesota, or any other state east of, east of the Rocky Mountains, so...
And, and this is kind of a, kind of way out, well, no, let me just say the comment, some comment is, Utah Constitution says that we're supposed to have free education, I haven't seen it yet. So technically, this Utah is in breach of the contract with me, I think, I would argue.
You, you can make that argument. The only way it would be free is if the state was generating revenue to pay for it without taking it from you.
Exactly.
But all of those funds come from you and, and your neighbors, and the companies you work for through income tax. And so that's not free, you're not paying for it at the point of service, except for some fees and extracurricular activities and things, but, yeah, that, that's a very valid point, we can't do that. And, and I believe that that was what was anticipated when we became a state, is that it wouldn't be paid for through taxiness. It would be paid for through the state and its abundance, abundant resources, being able to generate enough revenue to provide free education. That's, that's why it's in the Constitution. Was there one more comment? Yes, back there.
Another thing that's worrying to me is the amount of waste in our school system. I mean, you know, when I look at, when I look at the schools around here, and I look at, you know, you go out and you look at the salaries of people who work there, do we really need three preschools and a high school paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year? I don't think so.
Yeah, it, it's a sensitive issue, I agree with everything you've just said. Let me give you one other statistic. Over the last twenty years, here in Utah, we have added two administrative personnel for every one teacher. Is that a, a good use of public education dollars? I don't know.
Does my test score plummet?
What's that?
Does my test score plummet?
Does my test scores plummet? Yeah, I think...
It's not heavy, it's not going to do, adding more administration cannot help this.
I, I'm sure there is a correlation there. But, and, and it's not only we're adding it at a rate of two to one, but the two administrators get paid a lot more than the one teacher. And, and so now we're having a tough time getting quality teachers, because they're getting paid a lot more in Idaho, in, in Nevada, maybe not so much Idaho, but in Nevada. Our two biggest competitors are Nevada and Wyoming. Yeah, and so, it, it is a challenge, but I'm a, I'm a huge proponent of local control. And I think most of you are as well, and you don't want the legislator, the legislature mandating all of these restrictions on state, or, excuse me, county government, city government, or schools, school districts. So those problems need to be solved in your school districts. We continue to appropriate money, as we are constitutionally required to do, but I don't think you want the legislature being a super school board, and we do enough of that, we do too much of that already, I'll be the first to admit. It's because we hear from you. We're like the first point of contact for most citizens on these issues, for a number of reasons. They don't know who their school board members are, they're not as visible, they don't know who their state school board member is, and, and so we seem to be the most visible. And if they do know who they are, they've had, in many instances, not good experiences trying to make change. And so, I think, so there are some good things happening, but maybe not fast enough. But anyhow, we could, we could get sidetracked on that discussion, and, and I wanted to move on to Medicaid. Is it okay if we move on to Medicaid expansion? Now, this is a big issue, the governor's really pushing this, he's been working hard to try to negotiate a deal with the federal government. And he's invested so much time and energy into it, and has essentially got nothing. I understand why he feels so married to it at this point, because he's put so much into it. But the concessions that we have get, that got as a state are really window dressing. What we're talking about with Healthy Utah, is what the governor has called his plan, is ninety-five-plus percent Obamacare Medicaid expansion, maybe ninety-eight percent. And, and it's costly. But before I get to that, let's talk about where we are in Medicaid right now. Fifteen years, from, you know, fifteen years ago to today, it was thirteen percent of our general fund was spent on Medicaid, now it's twenty-three percent. We had five point five percent of our population on it, now we have eight point nine percent. The, the total cost, you can see how it's gone up about fifty percent roughly in the last fifteen years, per, per citizen, per, per participant. Now, we're going to have, this is traditional Medicaid, this is the Medicaid we've had for years. Go ahead and advance. We are going to have, there, there's a mandatory expansion part of, of Medicaid, whether or not we elect the Medicaid expansion, Healthy Utah route, every state is experiencing a, an automatic increase or an automatic expansion of, due to a number of factors. One, it's the individual mandate. We have a lot of people right now in Utah, not so much over the last year, but, but prior to this, prior to Obamacare, we've had a lot of people that qualified for Medicaid, traditional Medicaid, but just weren't on it, for various reasons. Maybe there was a stigma that they wanted to stay away from, maybe they had other coverage that they were paying for. But Medicaid's free. So, with the individual mandate and the burden, the duty of the state to put everyone who qualifies for traditional Medicaid on Medicaid, the whole application process doesn't seem so much like going in with your hat in your hand, asking for welfare, as it just is signing up for medical coverage. And so, we're going to have an increase of a minimum of seven thousand due to that, the people that already qualify. And then there, there are some changes that will add another seventeen thousand nine hundred of, of children that will move from, you know, who will move to Medicaid... from, you know, who moved to Medicaid from Chip. So that is an increase of 15 million a year to the state without any election to expand. Okay, advance. So here's what we're talking about with the expansion. When Obamacare was written and passed, they just assumed it would be upheld by the courts, and so there was a mandatory expansion of Medicaid, and that was the one part of the Supreme Court decision that went in favor of the states. The Supreme Court said to Congress, no, you cannot force states to expand Medicaid, expand the program. You can tweak with the original program, which is where we get that first mandatory expansion, but you cannot force them to expand full loan or lose everything. And so what happened with that is that it created a scenario where there's a, there's a group of people that don't qualify for anything unless we do Medicaid expansion, because the premium subsidies that you can get off from the state exchanges start at 100% of poverty level. And I've got a slide here that shows what that is, but, you know, roughly for a family of four, can you advance the, for a family of four, you're looking at 32, oh, excuse me, 27,000, 24,000 roughly, just under 24,000. That's not a lot of income. So if you had, so if you're at 100% of poverty level or above, you qualify for premium subsidies, that's tax credits, and at 100% of poverty level, it's essentially 100% reimbursement. And that goes all the way up to 400% of poverty level, so for a family of four, roughly $100,000 before it phases out completely. But here's the, here's the problem, called the Donacole. If you don't expand Medicaid, the premium subsidies don't kick in for people under 100% of poverty rate. Currently, Medicaid doesn't cover everyone under 100% of poverty level, it only covers the hardship cases for the most critical needs, so children, disabled, pregnant women, and elderly who don't qualify for Medicare. So we've got a population, go ahead and advance, we've got a population, if you look along at the top here, at 100% of poverty level, about 93,000 people that are in this hole, and if it goes up to 138%, that number is significant, I'll plug it in a minute, there's about 146,000 Utahns that are in this hole without premium subsidies. Now, from 94,000 up to 146, that 53,000, those 53,000 people can qualify for premium subsidies from the exchange, but the 93,000 can't. Go ahead and advance that. And so there are a number of things we can do to address this, and what the governor's plan does is it provides Medicaid to everyone up to 138%. And you have to ask why? If you can get nearly 100% premium subsidy at 100%, why are we going to put those people from 100% of poverty rate up to 138%? Why are we going to put them on Medicaid instead of just having them go into the exchange and get the premium subsidies? There's a reason for that. Go ahead and click that a couple more times till we get, one more, one more. The governor's plan, Healthy Utah, is this bottom one, and the reason that it's extended to 138% of poverty is because in the negotiations, we tried to get it to 100% only. The federal government said, fine, if we give that to you, then we're only going to give you a 70% participation rate, what your current Medicaid reimbursement rate is for traditional Medicaid. If you want the full 100% for the first three years and then declining to 90% ongoing, you have to do Medicaid expansion up to 138%. So here we go again, making a decision that affects our revenue and our budget based on chasing the federal dollar. So that plan goes up to 138%, so we can get that extra 20% participation from the federal government. But with the state of affairs of the federal government, can we really rely on that in perpetuity going forward? I think that's a risky bet to make. And so what we've got are a number of options. These are options that we saw last year in the House and the Senate that would issue state money and cover up to either 10,000 or 22,000, or one all the way up to 100% of poverty level, the full 93,000, but that would cost $136,000, $136 million at full implementation to the state. And the Healthy Utah would only cost 78 million if, and this is the big if, if the federal reimbursement stays at 90%, and I don't see how it can. So these are, these are the decisions that we have to deal with. So that's Medicaid expansion, and that's why many of us in the House and in the legislature are pushing back on this Healthy Utah plan. It's, you know, it's an incentive, it's highly front-end incentivized, and we need to look at the back end to make sure we're not getting ourselves into a mess that we just, that will just kill our budget. So go ahead and let's go through that, go forward again, go again. Okay, so, yeah, we, I don't know if we want to talk about all this, but I want to try to move along a little quicker, so. This just shows the match rate for 24, 2014 to 2016 would be 100%, and 2020, and those dollar figures that were on that previous slide were 2020 figures when, when this thing's supposed to stabilize, and it goes to 90 until and unless Congress changes it again. One of the other things, and one of the reasons I'm not real eager to expand Medicaid is because there's another Supreme Court decision that could blow this whole thing up again, and that is that these premium subsidies, under the statute, the specific language of the statute says they are available through state-created and state-run exchanges. Now remember, states pushed back on this, particularly after the first Supreme Court decision, and half of them refused to create these exchanges. Remember the exchange, the federal exchange that the government created? It was how many hundreds of millions of dollars, 600 or so million dollars to create that exchange? Well, the states, some of them did the same thing. Oregon created an exchange, and they were into it tens of millions, I think even hundreds of millions of dollars trying to do that. So many states didn't do it, and so the federal government just is offering or is providing those premium subsidies through the federal exchange. That is clearly, that clearly contradicts the letter of the law. Now, the government's, federal government's argument is, that was just an oversight, we just meant, you know, an exchange, you know, if they were doing that within their state, and the federal government has put an exchange into each of the states that refused to create one. So we really didn't mean to make a distinction between state and federal, which is a lie. It's a bold taste lie. This was the cornhusker kickback. Remember when Senator Nelson in Nebraska was the key vote on this? This was the issue that he did not want there to be a mandate from the federal government that the state had to create an exchange, because even though he was a Democrat, he was still states' rights oriented, because Nebraska is a very conservative state, very independent state, and so he held out, and they had to cut that deal with him, said, okay, we will not have a mandate on the states to create an exchange, the federal government will create it where the states refuse to. So they knew going in that, and they intentionally wrote it that way. So my, my thinking is, the federal government's going to lose this case, and at that point, tens of millions of people who are now getting premium subsidies through the state exchanges, I mean, through the federal exchange, aren't going to get it. So this whole thing is going to have to be reworked, and it may make sense for us to wait for that decision, to see what happens, and then we, then the federal government is going to be in a much weaker position and is going to be much more willing to compromise with each state and give the states a lot more latitude than Governor Herbert has been able to give Lisa.
Is there any talk of nullifying Obamacare within the borders of Utah?
There's, there's been, there's always talk about it. The problem is, and I've talked about nullification, I, I'm a strong proponent of that concept. I think states inherently have that right, but that's not what our federal courts have said, and our federal courts serve their federal master, and so we have been conditioned in this country to believe that when the federal courts speak, that's the end of the debate. And of course, that's a, that is a theory that grew out of a federal court case in 1803, Marbury versus Madison. It wasn't part of the Constitution, still isn't part of the Constitution, that the federal government's courts get to be the final word on disputes between the state constitutional power and federal, and federal authority. So, but we've lived with it for so long that you just cannot get traction with a nullification argument.
No legislature's even talking about it there?
I ran that bill the first session. I was there on federal firearms regulation, took all kinds of heat for it, and no, we couldn't get it passed. And the governor said if it did pass, he would threaten me because we have to obey the law of the land. Our own governor defers to any federal act as the law of the land. And so that's just the reality we have to deal with. Now, maybe that changes gradually over time, but nullification arguments just don't get any traction in today's political environment. So let's, so let's move on, and I want to talk about, the other big issue is fuel tax. Let me just state my belief, which I believe is probable, is well-founded, and is the probable outcome of this session. I don't think you will see a tax increase. I don't think you will see a sales tax increase. There's just not an appetite for it, and I'll explain why in a minute. And I don't think you're going to see an immediate gas tax increase, but we do have a structural defect in our gas tax that we do need to fix, and that is a fixed cent per gallon gradually erodes away to nothing. Last time we increased it in 1997, we went up five cents to 24 and a half cents. That 24 and a half cents in 1997 dollars is worth less than 16 cents in today's currency. And meanwhile, through inflation, you've got the cost of materials to maintain roads continuing to go up, our purchasing power continuing to go down. We can't survive, I mean, it's suicide really to continue on this path. I know a lot of people have said, well, let's just add 10 cents or 20 cents to the gas tax. That's a stopgap measure. We're right back in the same place 10 years from now. And so the structural flaw is, you've got to fix the problem, and that requires having a tax rate that keeps up with inflation, just like our sales tax does. When you go every year and buy clothes for your kids when they start school, the clothes may be a little bit more, but do you consider that a tax increase? Because the price of the good went up, the sales tax you pay on it is a little bit more, but do you turn to your government and say, thanks for increasing our taxes? No, I don't think you do. I mean, if you're rational, I don't think you do. And so that's the solution, and so I think what you'll see is a conversion from the cent per gallon to a fixed rate that, over time, will keep our purchasing power the same.
How would that work with the collection of the price of gas?
Well, it would be based on the price of gas, so.
So like if it's $2, they pay 10%, so it's 20 cents, but if it drops down to $1.50, the government is 15 cents.
Right, and if it goes up to $3, they get 30 cents.
Right.
So there would be volatility, that's the one that.
Why would they take some profit because it would be sort of awful?
Well, it would be volatile, but if you look at, if you look at the trend line, it's gradually going up. Inflation causes that, so.
Not anymore. I don't think I'd price it now.
No, but not, not if you take a snapshot, but if you look over a number of years, it will go up, and really, it can't go down much more, can it? So it's, it's a good time to do that for stability purposes, because it's not, had we done this a year ago, the state would be really hurting right now. I mean, our gas tax revenue would have been cut in half.
I like the idea that it's difficult for the legislature to raise taxes, it's not automatic.
Yeah.
I don't.
How do we fix our roads without having the right amount of money to fix them?
Exactly.
Well, you know, there's, I have been in St. George's State Department of Roads.
St. George's is pretty good, for the most part, St. George. They do pretty good, but they don't have the winters to deal with.
Yeah, but they, yeah, they don't have the recent hauls. But I mean, we've got to have something to fix this thing, because we're not paying taxes, but we are paying for tires and shocks and.
Running alignments.
Alignments and all the others.
Scratch front pumppers.
So is that, are these funds, when they're collected, earmarked for a certain?
The gas tax is earmarked for transportation. Now, here's the problem, through influences both in and out of the state, transportation, the definition of transportation has been expanded to mean things that we wouldn't have thought 40 years ago, bike trails, walking paths, pedestrian paths, things like that, and transit. So let's talk about that. We have, Mayor Daniels is still here, and I know I'm not going to make a friend, but I'm going to speak bluntly, and it's probably not the, and my, my projection may be wrong, but I have a pretty good sense that this is where the vast majority of other legislators are. The League of Cities is asking for another 20, excuse me, another 25% of a point increase, local option on sales tax, not gas tax, but sales tax. So your 6.85 would go up to 7.1, yeah, 7.1 if it was implemented. Here's where the legislature, and again, the majority, the consensus, not everyone believes the same way, but the consensus of legislators is, transportation is something that ought to be, for, to the greatest extent possible, funded through a user tax. Those who use the roads should pay for them, and how do you do that? What better way is there than through fuel? Well, registration fees is another thing, but if we raised registration fees, even if we cut the gas tax, if you were doubling your registration fee, you'd be, you'd be coming after me with pitchforks, so I don't want that. So that, you know, that's kind of off the table, we're really not talking about registration fees. But user fees, and this is not just a Utah thing, this is the, this is the standard nationwide, is that transportation should be funded through user fees to the extent possible. So there isn't much of an appetite for a local option, and it's not just that, it is, we've done this three times already. Can you put the next one up there, the other PowerPoint? We have, at the county level right now, your legislature has approved three different times, a quarter percent local option. One of them was subsequently increased to 0.3%. So right now, you've got 0.8% local option for transportation. You working on that? And here's where we are with it today. The first one, the oldest one, is 100% public transit. UTA controls that for the most part. The next one, oh, and by the way, that one was. The next one, oh, and by the way, that one was designated transit, so, public transit. So, so your, your local governments have no control over that. If they're going to impose that, they, they have the option to, to put the quarter percent raise in place, increase in place, but if they do, the, the funds have to be used for public transit. But the next one we had, which was the one that was originally 0.25, was increased, it doesn't matter when it was, but it's, it's 0.3 now. Could be used for public transportation, state and local highways. Local highway is defined as a, a road of regional significance. So that's what North County Boulevard is. It, it would probably also include, well, definitely State Highway, Canyon Road. The problem is the, the county controls this, where the, where this money is spent. Then the third one, we have a couple of things more to add. State highways, local highways, public transit, we have airport facility and traffic and pedestrian safety, and this is where you get bike and pedestrian paths in. So what, the proposal now is from the league, and the counties also, the, the Association of Counties is also asking for that extra quarter point, but there's conflict between the cities and the counties. The counties want to control it again, and the cities want to control it this time. And, and if you look at where we're spending the money today, you can certainly understand why the cities want to control it. Mayor, are you getting much of this money?
Zero.
And you're about to get less, if that's possible. So this is where BRT comes in. Out of this green box here, out of that, that money, we built North County Boulevard, which we benefit from. But what, what BRT, the proposal in Provo and Orem right now, will take all of that money at the whole county level for the next 12 years, and it be dedicated to BRT. So now there's some of that money that's already been collected and is earmarked for some projects that, that they've already identified. Those projects would continue, it wouldn't derail them, but no new projects would be approved out of that money for 12 years. Just a minute, I'll get to you.
Just what's BRT?
Oh, BRT, Bus Rapid Transit. This is a $150 million project that will service Provo and Orem. Well, it'll only come up to South Orem, to University Mall area and Parkway, and then down to kind of the middle of Provo, Provo downtown. And it'll just be Bus Rapid Transit, there'll be designated lanes in, in the roads just for those buses. That's $150 million. 75 million though comes from the federal government. So here we go, making decisions to chase the federal dollar. Now, you look at these local options, 0.8 of 1 percent, that's, that's hundreds of millions of dollars, by the way. Virtually all of it, oh, you see at the bottom there, 92 percent of the, the orange column is going to transit. 100 percent here, 100 percent there, if, if BRT passes. All of that to transit. Now, at some point, you know, back when we first started this, it made sense to try to stay ahead of the curve and, and get on this public transit bandwagon. But we have been acknowledged by the Federal Department of Transportation, the Wasatch Front, UTA, as the best, by far, the best public transit system for a metropolitan area of our size. We're the best, folks.
Best in what?
Best for a metropolitan area of our size, the Wasatch Front. UTA is, is far and away the best system.
In coverage, in revenue, in...
Uh, in, in service, service to the community.
So we're, we're having more transit to more areas, is that what...
Yes, for a metropolitan area of our size. Now, New York and DC and San Francisco, they've got much more sophisticated systems, but they're 10 times our size. So we're the best. Are, are our roads the best?
Not even close.
Not even close. So here's my frustration. To be asked to increase your tax, or to at least pass a law to increase your tax, or for the local jurisdictions to be able to increase your tax, doesn't sit right with me when we got those three buckets already in place and we're making a decision to take a third of it that could be used to service many of the roads in Pleasant Grove, many of the roads in American Ford, to maintain them, and give it all for the next 12 years to transit, to a system that is already recognized as the best for a metropolitan area of its size. Sure, it would be nice to have more, perhaps, for those who like, who love transit. It would be great for certain property owners, for certain cities, to have $150 million invested into Provo for the most part, a little bit Orem, that's great for those cities. But what does it do for District 57? Lisa?
That's only just build it. I mean, we're paying, we've done through the UTA audit, and we pay 80 percent for someone to ride, and whether it's bus, rail, pedestrian, anything, the citizens who are not riding is paid 80 percent every time someone gets on one of those things, and they only pay 20 percent for the ride.
The, the fees are so low, they don't cover, you know, even half of it. You're right, but that argument to me, that the taxpayers are subsidizing transit, is a little bit hollow because we subsidize automobile transportation as well. We, we pay for all the roads and maintain them, so, and some use them more than others, and some don't use them at all. But when they go buy gas for their four-wheelers, or their boats, or their, their lawn mowers, they're still contributing to that. So, yeah, it's, there is a lot of subsidy that goes on. It's, it's hard for me to genuinely single out transit as being something we should act because we subsidize it, when we subsidize everything. But, but we do subsidize it at a greater rate, though.
Not really comparable subsidies, though.
What?
Not really comparable subsidies, though, roads and mass transit.
No, I mean, there are differences, certainly.
Well, I mean, I mean, the other thing that we've got to remember is that, that while we do subsidize it at this point, part of it, when you, when you think about planning ahead, you know, securing the rights of way for rail, for example, right now, I mean, that goes into the cost that we're paying for, and maybe we're running the train too soon. But at the same time, if you, if you're going to pay to acquire the right of way that is going to serve you in 100 years, and would cost a zillion dollars to buy at that point, then nobody is going to, to say, okay, let's buy the right of way and never put a train on it.
And those are long-term decisions that your, your city and county and state leaders have to make, and they're not easy decisions. My point in, in sharing this graphic with you is that's not the only factor. Our roads are failing. They're just miserable. I hope all of you hate driving on them as much as I do, as much as I love living here. Every time I come down that hill and hit a big pot ball, I say a curse word under my breath because I know I'm gonna, gonna have to go get my front end of line again, or my tires. I mean, I get like 25,000 miles and a set of tires, and I'm sure all of you do as well, but that's because of the condition of our roads. Our cities don't have enough revenue to adequately take care of them. A lot of that is due to the declining purchasing power of the gas tax revenue that they do get a share of. But this is a local option, and Mayor, if you want to fight this and, and go, and try to change the allocation and make sure that, that third quarter is something that the cities can control better, I'll be right there with you. We'll change that statute because I think this is just reckless. In, in my estimate, I can't see spending all of those three revenue sources 100 percent on transit when we have such dire and desperate needs in our cities.
So, so why is our state legislature, or our local legislature at the state, can you not introduce a bill that would help American Ford and Pleasant Grove to get that local option?
I can introduce that bill, but it is a heavy lift. You have powerful influences, associations of counties, you have your metropolitan planning organizations, you're, you know, we have Mountain, Mountain Association of Governments here, who are, who have their own agenda. And they have influence at the state.
But we elected you, so...
Right, but I'm one vote, one of 38. It, it takes 38 to pass a bill.
But there's a whole bunch of cities that are in the same boat that we are, that all need help that way with our roads.
There, there are many. But I'm just, I'm telling you right now that regardless of that, many of them will be influenced by other factors. That's why I'm saying right now, tonight, Mayor, if you want to make a change here, I'll run that bill. We'll, we'll change the allocation of that, or, or at least try, because I think that is the most prudent direction to go, and not use that money for Bus Rapid Transit that only services Provo and Orem, and $150 million going into Provo and Orem instead of spread out through the rest of the county. We can't do that right now because the county has total control over where that goes. Now, yes, go ahead.
Will you run that bill?
I will, yes.
But we need to, we need to remember, though, we've got Orem and Provo, who have a lot more clout than Pleasant Grove, right, that are going to be pushing the campaign to pass this because they benefit.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a bad...
But this is, this is a local decision.
They have roads that need to be fixed too, though.
Sure, they're not going to, they're going to be fighting for this.
If you conflate mass transit and roads, we're always conflating the issue of mass transit and roads. I think it confuses the issue. We, we defund roads in favor of public transit.
Serves a lot of...
There's separations. Even if you build the best public transit system, you do not decrease the need for roads.
A lot of, I mean, there are, for the most part, the legislature tries to honor this age-old concept, principle of local control. The government making decisions at the local level, for the most part, is better for the people. That's what was done here. Because it's part of the sales tax, the state had to create the ability to increase it, but then negate that authority to the counties with some parameters. If you don't like the decisions that were made, those decisions of where to, and where and how to spend that money were made at the county level, not at the state level. So what do we do? Become dictators?
So we need to talk to the county commissioners, too, and the county commissioners?
This is a county commissioner issue, Mayor.
I have just two points. I support the change in the gas taxes because I think that the way that it's set up today is...
And that will result in more revenue from the cities, yes.
And, and I think that that formula also should be readdressed so that a larger proportion goes to E and C roads. Because right now, the money that is generated, and that will be generated, will still end up in the same hands and be controlled by the same level. There is no opportunity at the local level, when I say local, I mean, the 248, 250 municipalities, there's no authority to raise any tax to cover roads. And, and what we're specifically asking for through the Utah League of Cities and Towns is for the state legislature to grant that authority, pass the counties, pass MAG, pass anything else, and put it right in the hands of the cities so that they...
I would rather do that with that third quarter that's already in place than to increase taxes even more just to do that. I agree with you that it should be a local, even more local decision at the city level. You should have more control of that, but we can do that with that person, with, with that button that's already in place.
I wish we could.
But you're saying that will...
Secure the right of way.
You're saying that can't change because it's out of your role and you can't do it.
Just sit for 10, 15 years.
I'm not saying I can't, I'm saying there are, there will be a lot going on with transportation. There will be a number of bills introduced. There will be an opportunity to, to create an amendment to one of those bills to, to try to address this. And maybe with the momentum of, of the main direction of the bill, something like this could, could get incorporated.
But gasoline tax is a huge tax, and I think that's where the money will come from. Sales tax, often be buying some groceries. I think it will become out of the gasoline tax because everyone pays with the gasoline tax, even the people who come from outsiders in need of gasoline.
And it will. If we convert it to a percentage, the rate, the revenue generated will gradually go up, with meaning more of it will come back to the cities, and it will keep pace with inflation. So, so that will address part of the problem. I wouldn't be suggesting this if this was a new tax, but this is, this is a tax that's been in place for 10 years or more. And so it, since it's already there, why not make sure that we here at the local level are, are benefiting equally from it?
But Utah's transit has already got the hooks of this, Orem, I mean, the mayor of Orem has been fighting for this. The Chamber of Commerce, Utah Chamber of Commerce has been fighting for this.
I know. That's why I said it's a heavy lift.
Yeah, so I would see that, and so in, for the city, something that is not going to be done, I think going to have a Plan B, which is what could do to make the gasoline tax more controlled by the local municipalities, fix on roads. Since I'm paying that tax, I'd like to see a chunk of it going back to the city, they will fix our roads. Right now, I'm saying that they only get the, even if we don't change it, how much we get taxed, the control of money should be changed. Who gets to spend that money should be changed.
Well, that control is, when that money comes to the city, it's completely within their control. What, what the mayor was saying is that he doesn't think the allocation of it is equitable. The state keeps 70 percent of it, 30 percent comes back to...
We, we can tell because the minute you drive off of a UDOT road onto a city road, you know because of the sound your car's making.
I, I agree, and that is an issue that we will, we will address. And I would fight for a more equitable distribution. Maybe it's 35 percent. I mean, 35 percent, 65 percent would be a huge difference. I mean, that would make an impact. I don't know how much we can get, but if, you know, we all need to come together in the legislature to tackle this and to come up with a solution. And that's going to take some compromise, that's going to take some back and forth. And, you know, if, if I'm expected to get behind something that I may not find perfect, maybe I can do so if, if we can get a, a better allocation of those funds. I mean, the last thing we want to do here, because this is, this is something that we need to solve, and we, we can't let the, you know, perfect become the enemy of the good. Maybe we don't get it all done this time around, but we need to start making progress. And so you have my commitment that I will fight for a greater alloc, proportion of that gas tax revenue coming to local jurisdictions. But there's maybe even something we can do here, since that tax is already in place.
Do you have a thought?
Question back there.
There, there's a common misconception that public transit is going to take more cars off the road, making it so that there's less road maintenance. That is in fact, from transportation engineering standpoint, the opposite of the truth. The truth is that cars have PSL rated at 0.0008, which is essentially nothing, they're negligible in all engineering calculations for passenger cars. We could build a road once, and cars run for 100 years, and there's hardly any degradation or surface roughness difference. It's the buses, the trucks, the heavy equipment, that's all the stuff that degrades the roads. It's a weight calculation. Buses are at 0.68, and the heavy trucks are around 1. So 0.008 for passenger cars versus 0.68 for a bus. We're building more buses, we're creating more road degradation, we're creating more issues. This is negative exponential function, meaning if we put all the money into the buses and nothing into the roads, the roads are going to degrade faster, we're going to have bigger financial issues down the road before repairing those roads.
I think I agree with everything you just said. I'm not sure I understand.
No, our time to get to it, but...
But I get the gist. Okay, well, we're beyond quitting time, and I don't want to get kicked out of here, but I'm willing to stay a few more minutes. This was all I had prepared. I want to, you know, answer any questions that, that you may... that you may have on issues we haven't discussed yet. Yes?
So, if you were to commit to fight for us for the roads, also, if you have what other bills you are sponsoring and responsoring that will directly affect us in District 57?
Yeah, I don't know that there are any bills that are specific to District 57. There are bills that will benefit every citizen. And so, you know, District 57 citizens are part of the whole.
Yeah, but we ask you to represent us, so I'm asking how your bills enter, say, what are your sponsor and sponsors are representing what we want?
Well, let me go through a couple of them. I have a bill that will allow, make it easier for small businesses and startups to generate startup capital by creating an exemption to our current very rigid and costly securities laws. So for anyone, any small startup business wanting to generate less than $2 million in startup capital, we will have a, if the bill passes, there will be a method, a convenient, easy, cost-effective method to do that. That will help small businesses here in District 57 and throughout the state. So, you know, that's one example. I've got a, you know, the state school board election process bill again, the one I ran last year, that will affect, I mean, it'll affect us statewide, but it will give citizens of District 57 greater involvement in the election of their state school board member.
Are you sure that's what the people of our district want? Partisans to the board election?
Not every citizen wants that. I understand that, but I, my sense is the vast majority do want that.
I do.
Yeah, and those I talk to, it's very one-sided. Most people do want that. And it's not the fact that they're partisan. And that doesn't make any difference to me what partisan somebody is. That's not why I'm running the bill. The reason that I'm running the bill is because it takes advantage of a process that seems to work. The candidates must come to the citizens, the delegates, state their case, ask for the vote. You get to know who your candidate is beholden to, what their philosophies are, things you have no involvement in right now. That's the process, the partisan election process is the process that we have that allows that. That's why I suggest we use it. If there is a better process, I'm happy to look at it. But to create a new process costs money. And I was trying not to have this change be a fiscal impact on the state. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I would suggest you give more input and look forward to more of that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand it.
I would suggest you don't look at input from your progressive system.
Oh, I, believe me, I have. And I understand that not everyone supports it. And I appreciate that, and I respect that. But that's an issue that I. Let's take a straw poll right now. Who would like to see that change in the state school board election process? Okay, and who would not like to see that? So it's about two or three to one, which is kind of standard of what I'm experiencing. So, again, I take input from many, many citizens in the district. This isn't something that I came up with on my own. It's something that people came to me and asked me to do. Many of, many of our district citizens.
The thing is now is, you know, the person who's appointed to that position or elected to that position is, has political belief one side or the other already. You just don't know what those are. And so, the election process sort of ferrets that out so that you do find out what their stance is on things, or at least their opponents will say things about it. And so, I see nothing wrong with what you might call partisanship because they're already going to have partisan beliefs when they go with their, even if they're not appointed yet by a Democrat or a Republican. They have those beliefs already.
They have those alliances. And we saw that rear its head in a local state school board election. Our district here for state school board, we saw that in local school board elections in Provo, if you were following in these last elections. It was very political. Didn't have the party designations behind them, but it was very, very political. Every bit as much as it had the, had party designations. There were different philosophies, and the schools and the children were used to take those messages home to their parents, which I find very distasteful. And so, those are some of the arguments I've heard against making it partisan. And I'm here to tell you that that happens every bit as much currently in our current system. And so, I don't think we add to that at all with a partisan election. Yes?
So, in our own local school board elections this year, there was, if not illegal, at least extremely immoral actions being taken. Is there anything that the state can do to oversee the school board who believes they're above everything else and even above the law this year?
Well, the state, there is an entity at the state level, and it's your state school board. And under our constitution, our state constitution, your state school board is responsible for the management and control of our public school system. That's why I'm very hesitant to carry bills that change or that insert the legislature in the place of the state school board by changing programs and policies and curriculum and standards.
No, I don't think the legislature should institute their own standard or curriculum. But there's, I think there's got to be some overseer. If everyone's in the same bed, there's got to be someone looking in saying, you know, it's not voting.
And that's why you see so much activity out of the legislature because we do get these, this is one of the issues that we're approached with more than just about any other. In the time going, it's every year, it's education concerns.
That's our fault. We voted them in. It's our job to vote them out if there's a problem. I don't think there's any legislature or any judicial, if they're doing criminal acts, that's right. Get them out, get them, throw them in jail, whatever else. But as for their decisions they're making, that's our job as citizens to vote in the right people, to make the right decisions in accordance to what we want.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You don't see them, though. You don't see them, you don't get crushed down. You get. Right, there's not so visibility on the school board level as there is on the state.
Even the general board, maybe?
Well, yeah.
Local board, yeah. And my proposal doesn't affect the local school boards. The bill would only change the state school board to use that partisan process. And I think the best argument for that is is that each of our state school board districts are twice as big as a senate district. And, you know, somebody can fly under the radar real easy in an area that big. And so, use this program and make them come at least to the delegates, at least through the convention, your primary process, that delegates and voters are involved in instead of only seeing two names on a general election ballot. And you're absolutely right, Mark, nobody knows who they are. Because they, they have campaigned to the governor and to the governor's selection committee, not to the voters, the people that they need to serve. So, I think we need to leave. I think that's why our friendly guest is standing back there. I appreciate all of you coming. I'm happy to meet with you anytime, one-on-one or in small groups. Contact me through voice, or through email, or just call me. My contact information is all on my website. Quickly, yes?
I just wanted to personally ask what you think of the biggest piece for the state, not the state, for the district. Do you think it's roads, that's what we're talking about, or the citizens?
Well, no, I don't think the president's an issue that really has a major impact on our district. I think it's, I think it's roads. I think, I think our roads are the number one issue that needs to be addressed. And that's why I spent time on it. That's why I'm gonna do what I can in this session to make sure that we are better allocating money to our local communities to do that. I think once, you know, I think roads, improving the roads will have a lot of indirect consequences. I think if we have better roads, you know, we may see more development. And so, that has its own benefits to the district. But if our transportation system is so degraded the way it is, it makes it tough for development to occur. And it's not attractive when businesses are looking for a new home. They've got a lot of, two things happen. You know, they've got a lot of employees. They have community. But the other thing is, they become the source of fixing everything. And those are developing conditions that are put on new projects, new businesses, when they want to come in and build. Well, the roads can't accommodate the traffic you're going to bring in. And so, you've got to redo a lot of roadway, a lot of intersections, a lot of utilities. I think infrastructure is key. And I think that's probably one of the highest priorities of our municipal government. And to the extent we can help them at the state level, I'm happy to do what I can.
So, how many bills should be included?
Well, related to funding, transportation funding, I think your.
From you, sorry.
Oh.
Were you being all the sponsors, co-sponsors of the guys?
Well, at this stage in the game, it's too late to have a standalone bill. So my approach will be, you know, amending one of the other, one or more of the other transportation bills, whatever one looks like it may stand the best chance of getting through, working with Johnny Anderson, the House sponsor of our major transportation bill. He's the chair of the transportation committees and working with him to try to get those changes in that comprehensive transportation. All right, thank you again for coming. I appreciate such a dependence on questions. And I'm serious when I say, contact me anytime.
Brian, thanks for doing this tonight.
You're welcome. Hey, Troy?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a minute? Well, I'm gonna try to get a hold of you in the next few days. I have something to discuss.
Yes, sir.